All right. All right, good evening, everyone. This work session of ASIO Schoolwork is being conducted at Oakview Early Education Center in Lakeview Grove. Today is October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. This work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be available on the district website within twenty-four hours after the work session ended. So first though, because we're in our new, we're in a new place tonight, we're going to introduce some new Sally Elmore for New Year's ECF. And also, as I say, Debbie goes stomping around.
Thank you. As Tommy said, I'm Sally Elmore. Sally Elmore, Chief of Programs and the building administrator here. Welcome. Super happy to have you in this space. I know for some of you it's the first time. For others like Heather and Jackie, you've been here many times, so it'd be nice to have you. We don't have students in the building tonight, so the pictures on the table are here to inspire you and to just give you an idea of what happens here. The space that you're in is our motor room, so it's never this quiet. Usually, we've got kids zipping around and climbing and throwing and all this stuff. A few things that I wanted to just walk you through really quickly. There were folders in the table. If you look at the left-hand side of your folder, these are all of the pieces of information families receive in the mail about the program. I oversee three programs. Early Childhood Screening is that program that happens at age three. Prior to kindergarten, it really helps get children on track or come into our school system. I should also say, this is often things that first stop for families in this district. So I really oversee five grade levels, starting with infancy up to behavior. We are the entry point for many families. So when families connect with us, we're able to get them on track and get them all set for kindergarten. The piece right behind that is our Early Childhood Family ID Road Tour. These are those classes that parents come to with their children. Right behind that is preschool pre-K. This is one of our options for three- and four-year-olds in the district. And then right behind that is a piece that we use a lot to help families find their place in the district. On the side with the red over here to the left really shows you the flow of programming for the programs that I oversee. And then on the back side, it shows you how children progress through our preschool pre-K. When they go through our programs, regardless of where they go, they learn about screening. When they learn about screening, they learn about enrollment and kindergarten fairs and open houses, and they're just on track to successfully transition. On the other side of the folder, there are some pieces that aren't really public pieces. These are just for your information. The first one is community needs assessment. It's the first time that we worked with wilder research. That was last year. This is phase one. Community needs assessment is something we require to do annually, so it just has a lot of good information about the families in our programs compared to the families in our district, compared to families in the community, or the county, I should say. And then right behind that is a real quick picture of what it looks like in terms of participation numbers district-wide for preschool people. And you can see the impact on the pandemic. And John, when you walked in, you asked if we were super busy here. And much like other programs in County, we have to rebuild them. We lost quite a few families in the pandemic. We continue to program, and you'll see we have families and children with masks on them, but we are rebuilding our programs through rebuilding levels. On the back side of that, you can see where we're at so far this year in our programs. And you can see that both ECFP and preschool pre-K programs have, the majority of people have either free or reduced tuition. And then right behind that is a brand-new piece that we're pretty proud of. We're taking collaboration with a few different departments. Kay has a heavy hand in this piece. It's a piece to highlight the different options for preschool pre-K programming in our district, because we have four-star express. We have the programs I supervise. We have the free half-day pre-kindergartens. And this just gives an altered view of what families need to know about entering the end of programs. Then, those of you at the tables, sorry, chair people, have a good evening. This is a sample of what family would get when they come to our free baby and need class. It's a way we celebrate babies, we welcome them to the district, we welcome them to our program, and they get all kinds of good things. First thing is open-ended joy. There's no buttons, there's no lights, there's no sounds. It can be a teeter, it can be a color, it can be a thrower. It's pretty ageless baby's luggies. Some of you already saw adorable ones. We also have a book in here, activities that families can do with their infants. And when families come, they get about ten more books to add to their home. We didn't give you those. My request is if you know a family that recently had a baby or is expecting a baby, you give them this bag of goodies, as well as that brochure on ECFP to invite them to the school. It's a great program, and it's still a well-kept secret. It's really a word-of-mouth program, so I'm leveraging relationships here and asking them to promote it, and they'll be connected. And with that, I will thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Sally.
So maybe a little bit from the start, so it's kind of stressed what Sally was sharing. It's a great kept secret, some of you have lived it. Without, you know, giving it totally away, we're planning on showcasing this through my MacIntyre Minute videos we started last year. And our kindergarten information fair is this week's Saturday at Basswood. So, and this is the experience here, and then transition in our report, preparing them for that for next year with those kind of connections. I love that she said rebuilding, fits with our reset, re-imagine, a mantra that we've been really going with here since the start of the school year or so. Appreciate everyone coming to this location and getting a taste of what we offer. Well, thank you.
Okay, the purpose of this schoolwork work session is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information and act in a role to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making and regular schoolwork. That will move today's work session, where members will receive information in October and twenty-two, twenty-three, start of school monitoring report, strategic change initiatives, as well as a board calendar review. So to acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll have signed board members' cabinets and reviews back, or on the table, so we can read. I'll start with...
Greg McIntyre, Superintendent. Tim Palmetier, Director of Council.
Greg Douglas, School Board Member.
Dwayne Wardali, Director of Educational Equity.
Brian Bassett, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement.
John John Troy Arston, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Tom Watkins, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Robin Gonzalez, Director of Learning and Achievement.
Tamara Grady, She Her Hers, Director of School Board.
John Morsted, Executive Director, Finance and Operations.
Kevahala, Community Relations Director.
Thomas Burles, School Board Member.
Ryan Severson-Hall, Executive Director of Team Engagement.
Tanya Simons, School Board Member.
Steve West, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools.
Anthony Parnas, Executive Director of Technology.
Kelly Parpar, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools.
Laura Anderson, Executive Director of Learning Resources.
Jackie Muscina-Jones, School Board Director. Kelsey Dawson, all things we'll put back there.
All right, well, thank you, Kelsey, and board members. And we are excited for our team to be with you again. And we're getting this rhythm of having our work sessions together, and I'm excited that we get to spend more time with our members, but our leaders in our district. So, just a quick review of the agenda. We'll give you our, I'll give you our twenty-two, twenty-three start of school update from now until about six fifty is kind of our estimated time for this. And then transitions from there to our very first monitoring report of the year, and really our very first monitoring report ever with our new strategic plan. So a lot of new things, and we're excited about your feedback. We'll go until about seven thirty-five, and then I'll just quickly review some board calendar items coming up for the remainder of this year, which is not much left. Like, we got February, November, December, and all this hit the highlights of some things coming on our agendas before wrapping up for the night. So, to kind of move right into the start of the school year update, I appreciate the board giving us about a month to just experience, you know, all of the efforts just to kick up here. So if we just take a moment and think back of what the start of the school year has looked like the last two years, this is very different, right? And as I've been to every site in our, in our district, what I've noticed is, you know, we, despite the challenges we have with a lot of openings, workforce shortages, other things, what I have seen and felt is a renewed sense of staff feeling they're getting back to what they're good at. Teachers want to teach, or, you know, we put on the lesson, and our staff are just wanting to get back to what they were hired to do, instead of always the uncertainty that we've met through the last couple of years. And I think it's sort of that reset, reimagine, and refocus that I really have sense for staff, even some of the challenges that we have, or like, these are kind of familiar, we remember some of these things, and, and having an added confidence in how to attack those. So, we were, we kind of wrestled with how to organize our, now, how do we tell you the story about the start of the year's deadline? And actually, I was having a conversation with board member Simon, and you had brought up, you kind of liked the red-yellow-read approach, keeping it kind of simple, but organizing, you know, what's kind of on target for us, what's been progressing, we're not quite there, and then what have been some challenges. So that's how we've organized the thoughts here. This is not a deep dive into a lot of data on this agenda item. We will go into some, a lot more data on our next agenda item. This is just a chance for each of our departments to tell you a little bit about what the first two weeks of school have been like for us in the, in the lens of on-target progress and our challenging. So, well, this is going to take turns. I asked our, our leaders to give you updates on their departments in, in that framework. And I'm going to ask Kelly and Steve to start us off with our DLTL school site perspective.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and start us. So, good evening, everyone. I'm going to move from left to right, so I'll start with the, the challenges here. And I would just preface it in terms of, as you look down this update, you'll see that one, repeated are the challenges around staffing. So, I'm going to address a little bit about that, but I also want to just put it in the context that, you know, what I'm sharing around this particular item, I think is positive. And that is, in late August, we came together, Kate facilitated a meeting, we had the principals there, myself, and Brian was there as well, along with EMO, and, as well as Student Services, and then we had HR. And so, came together to collectively talk about and try and problem-solve around the staffing shortages that we have for licensed and non-licensed staff. And so, although, again, that's been a challenge, it's been on everyone's mind throughout the district and in the schools, it was good and, I think, positive for us to come together in that way. One of the solutions that did come out of it that we did exercise on, and you may hear a little bit more about this further on in the presentation, but we identified some capacity in two-seven-nine online. And even though we made some moves to move those individuals in, and we've had some mixed results with it, it was a proactive opportunity for us to try and identify capacity in the district and move it to where we really needed it. And so, there's been ongoing, you know, I think supportive conversations that I'd like to share with you, and certainly partnering with Student Services, and really also trying to address proactively around our ESPs. HR, Student Services, and EMO came together, and because there were some, because we had to address those shortages in skills, strategies, and connect, or one-on-one positions, we did some shifting of some resource ESPs. And so, again, EMO, part of those conversations, again, with the, the attempt to really problem-solve and be innovative with the staff that we have. And just knowing that the district in this particular is continuing to work on hiring strategies, calling retired teachers, substitute ESPs, attending hiring fairs, creating hiring fairs are some of the things that the, that the team has been putting together, as well as trying to, again, utilize any kind of flow of positions to support our schools as we navigate these, these issues. And then just kudos to some of our students and our leaders who've stepped up and used this as an opportunity, now, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about the referendum, but how to showcase the referendum, but also tool it for staffs. Or, for example, Birch Grove did a number of different activities where they had families come in, and they used that as an opportunity to really be proactive and identify and, and get that message out around opportunities for staff or for employment. So, that's kind of what I wanted to share on that particular item. Kind of moving to the next column, progressing, I'm going to do the first one, Building a Better Future. Kelly and I have been supporting our referendum, the referendum campaign through, you know, the attendance of the community information meetings, so that you'll, you'll see us there supporting in any way that we can in terms of communicating around the questions. Also, been supporting Kay. Kay's team has been doing a tremendous amount of work. And so, encouraging our schools to really dig into those referendum plans and use and find those innovative ways to connect with community members, their, their staff, which we know is absolutely powerful. Kelly and I actually took some risk and put our vehicles out there, so Rice Lake held a Saturday car wash, and so we both am, and glad to say that the kids and the staff did, and the parents did a great job of cleaning those cars, so thank you to the Rice Lake staff. We also, just last month, again, making sure that we're connecting our leaders into this, had at our learner leaders meeting, Kay, again, came. We spoke about the brush fire survey, really, again, encouraging how we're going to be proactive in getting that word out is what we've been focusing, focusing in on. So really using that, again, as a way to, to say, how can we do more about supporting that and getting that information out there? And of course, as always, we have to bring in our attorney, Tim Palmetier, who we have to learn, leaders made sure to stress with everyone what is appropriate involvement in the referendum. So those are, really, the focus is on our current phase with Building a Better Future, with more to come, obviously, is into the future. So I'm going to turn this over to Kelly.
So I'll kick up with commencement, twenty-twenty-three planning. So, you may or may not know that Mariucci is undergoing some renovations this year, so they will not be able to host our commencement for Maple Grove Senior, ASIO Senior, or for Park Center. So after many, many conversations and visits, we finalized the selection of our location for twenty-twenty-three. It will now be held at the Maturi Sports Pavilion on the U of M campus. And we'll continue to host the two-seven-nine online commencement at the McNamara Alumni Center. And the reason we have this in the progressing column is that now we basically start all over with logistics, figuring out how to do the seating, how to do the staging, busing, transportation, all of it, because it's a brand-new location. But then we're going to move over to the green column, On Target. So On Target, the first thing listed are the learner leader meetings. So you may or may not know that Steve and I can make a group of leaders monthly that consists of all lead principals, all assistant principals, all DLTL directors, DLTL assistant directors, and then a number of our DLTL coordinators. And the purpose of our monthly meetings is for leaders to meet in order to coordinate action to accomplish our strategic corrections. We host an eight-hour kickoff training every August, so that took place this year in August. We already had our first monthly meeting in September, and our next meeting now is scheduled for Thursday, to just for our October meeting is on Thursday. So just to give you a little bit of flavor of what we do at those meetings, our agenda items range from topics around learning and achievement, such as pedagogy of voice, or talking about supports for science and math implementation, to our work around student services that could include such things as reviewing manifestation determination guidelines and protocols, to student management discussions around our PBIS work, to, of course, continuing discussions around ensuring equity for each of our scholars, most specifically those that are furthest from justice. An example of that is just last September, we had, we dug much deeper and further into the LBGQIA plus resolution and what that means for our sites, for the work at the sites. Then moving down the column, On Target, is our lead principal connected meetings. So this includes regular meetings that Steve and I hold, either with a group of principals, such as middle school, high school, or elementary, or meetings that we hold with individual principals, and these are outside of our monthly learner leader meetings. At both the elementary and the secondary levels, we regularly visit the principals directly at their sites and/or we talk to them on a regular basis, sometimes daily, depending on what's occurring at that site at that particular moment. At the elementary level, Steve also regularly meets with cluster leaders, so the seventeen elementary schools are divided into clusters, so it's a much easier way to meet with them. There's eight secondary principals, so it's easier for me to meet with a group of eight. At the secondary level, I also regularly hold Google Meet meetings when I need to bring them all together quickly in order to talk about pertinent, timely issues. So an example of that is their three-year operational plans. I just called them together yesterday, and we met for a couple of hours because some questions were surfacing around three-year operational plans, as that's new learning for them. Now, in October and going into November, Steve and I will start our one-on-one principal meetings to go over their three-year operational plan, and also to go over the goals that they've set for the years, or for the year. The meetings will include reviewing their reading and math data. We look at their discipline data from the end of last year. We look at their graduation data, and then we also talk about family engagement strategies. So then moving down the list again, you'll see the CEL Principal Support Academy, and if you recall, CEL stands for Center for Educational Leadership, and the Principal Support Academy, we talked about that at our last work session as well. So, all of us, so the superintendent, Corey, the assistant superintendents, and our DLTL directors attended a full two-day training last spring. We also had a full two-day training this summer, in order to continue learning how best to support our principals. We also have Center for Educational Leadership professional learning team sessions with our coach, we have an assigned coach, and then we also have team coaching sessions with our coach. So we have, we together as a group form a professional learning team, and we meet with our coach regularly for our PLT time, and then we also meet regularly for individual coaching sessions. Then we also are working with a predetermined principal, and we're working with that principal and developing a theory of action. And that theory of action needs to be around a scholar problem of learning. So we identify what are our scholars struggling with. That then directly impacts a teacher problem of practice, which ultimately means that there's a principal problem of leadership, correct, or of practice as well. So it's that, as Corey talks, and we talked often, it's that direct line of accountability. So what are the students struggling with? We look at the teacher practice, we look at the principal practice, and that's what we're here to influence, is all the principals, our, to get their practice. Then, next going down is the Safety and Emergency Preparedness. So we collaborate with our Safety and Emergency Preparedness team, specifically Troy, Dave, and Emily, often throughout the year, often. Most recently, we dealt, right, even before school started, we dealt with an ASIO Senior High social media post, that was actually an old post from a year ago, and then we have resurfacing. So we, we dealt with that. We had a shelter in place at Middle School a few weeks ago. We had a shelter in place at some of our Brooklyn Park schools because of something happening in the community. You know, we dealt with some rumors. Anytime we have a homecoming football game coming up, it is rife with rumors, and then certainly was no exception for the Park Center game. So we dealt with that, and then we have ASIO rumors circulated last week for the ASIO Senior High Football Week. So those are things that we work very, very closely with safety and emergency preparedness on those events. And right now, we are also working on Steve, actually Troy, I mean, and Dave, have done a really great job of putting together some stadium protocols after what happened at Ridgefield and in other places, and so we're working on refining those right now. And then Steve's going to finish up with our last.
Yeah, so moving on, so the North Star Accountability, so this work is really beginning to gear up, really across the state. And so I bet, just initially, as you know, it's always the, the communication of the list that went out. So I've worked with Robin, and we wanted to make sure that we connected with all the leaders that are impacted, and I believe that list has been shared with, with the board on the schools that have been impacted by this. But that's been kind of the front-end work that we've been doing. And also, just recently, at the end of this past month, MD has started to put together their support for their development, and so they've had some professional development, both for district folk and, and also for our schools. And so, but I'm, I'm glad to say that ASIO, too, under Robin's leadership, has been really proactive, and has already met with our region, Regional Center for Education, those folks who are coming in, and so our principals have already connected with them. What we're waiting to hear on and see, and what I understand is, this month, we'll see a little bit more about what, and timeline around the expectations, and what schools are going to have to deliver on. So we're hoping, obviously, the work that we're doing with our strategic plan is going to align, I think we talked a little bit about that at one of our previous work sessions, but to see as much of that information that can align with our three-year operation plan. So as I said, there's still some open questions and a lot of kind of connecting that's going to do, and I think our, our next meeting with RCE is going to be November fourth of this, next month. Final item, just really pleased to, to report to you on this. We've had a fair amount of leadership, senior, principal leadership changes. And so, over the summer, starting in the spring, but also this summer, I facilitated some leadership changes at Crestview, and Stephanie Webster has now moved from Oakview, is now the principal there, so we're excited to have her there. We just hired, our last hire was Terry Jackson, who's now a principal of Woodland. I think some of you had an opportunity to meet her as well, coming from experienced principal from St. Paul. So we're really pleased to have her. And the hire in the spring was Diane Bagley, and we were there, and you've got a chance to hear from her briefly. And so we're supporting it, I'm supporting, the district supporting those leaders as they got on board during the summer, but also kind of moving forward. So thank you to all the departments that have stepped in and really wrapped their hands around these leaders, and I've heard that repeatedly from them, so thank you for that. We also have two new assistant principals. We have Jody Sepla over at Oakview, and at Birch Grove, we have Lindsay Patterson. And so, again, those onboarding and the kind of that support piece is going to be happening over the course of the year. I will be meeting with the new principals twice a month and, and making sure that I'm checking in with them, in addition to all the other sort of connections, because they need that, that, they need that time and that opportunity to connect on how things are going in the buildings. We also have a retired principal, Ann Mock, who I think you know, has been providing some additional support for principals, so really tapping into that experience, and she's been phenomenal, both in just helping our new leaders onboard into the systems, but in some of the transition period was helping with some of the hiring, so we wanted, especially at Woodland, with the timing on that vacancy, we wanted to make sure that we had the supports in place as much as possible, and that's worked really good. And we're also in conversation with Ann and I with supporting our new assistant principals and looking for a way to do that. So I am going to...
I'll just let you jump right in, we can go to Brian. And board members, we'll just kind of get through all of our updates, and then we'll turn up for questions. But I did want to emphasize one thing I think was important to the board leading into the launch of the new strategic plan, and thank Kelly and Steve and all the other cabinet members. We, we met with all the learning leaders and had this conversation about accountability and what it means, and what it looks like, and really with the goal, that, that sometimes can feel kind of happy and maybe even corrective, and our goal is to foot that and for that to be empowering for our leaders. And how do we have those conversations so that, and really we just modeled of how you would do that with cabinet, how cabinet will do that with principals, how principals will do that with teachers, and so through the organization, to really hold ourselves accountable for the actions that need to be sustained throughout the year. We're launching now, how we can stay focused on those commitments and really drive expectations, because really what accountability is being really clear in expectations. So I want to thank our team for, for continuing that theme throughout as we stay focused on our plan to get, to get better results. So, just want to add that in there. Thanks, Steve and Kelly. Change over to Brian, your team?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share out. I think, I think back to last spring and us working hard on our operational plans and identifying all these initiatives that we have in the system, that are they in standard, are they in implementation, are they in learning? And here we are, being able to report out with the strong alignment that's been in MacIntyre that we just heard about. So, so our directors are prepared to share with you some updates and highlights on some of the initiatives that are in progress, and very exciting, very exciting. So I think we're going to start with our Director of Learning and Achievement, Robin, and then we'll transition to Kay, I'm sorry. Kay Demins, Director of Student Services, and then Dwayne Wardali, Director of Educational Equity.
Perfect, thank you. I'm going to start by talking about a challenge that's moving into progressing. So it was a challenge when we began, but we... So it was a challenge when we began, but we are working on it. So as, as you all know, that we are implementing new social-emotional learning curriculum this year, and we are training staff on the materials during this month in October with some really technical pieces, like how do we log in? How do we access the materials? What do the lessons look like? How do I project all those little pieces so that they're ready to teach it? And then in November, on November 8th, when we have our system staff development time, we're going to be training all teachers pre-K through 12 on using this material, using the material, and what it means to do a social-emotional learning lesson, because it takes some skill and some listening, some empathy, and really knowing, getting to know your students well, and being able to facilitate those conversations. And some of them may be a little bit sensitive, so we're really giving them some guides. So we're actually collaborating with counselors to provide those sessions on November 8th. Why it's in the challenge area is that for elementary, providing social-emotional learning lessons is not a big deal. They feel like they do those kinds, similar kinds of things throughout the day. But for middle school and high school, when the teachers are more really content-based, this was a new thing, because many of them are from the law, this is a little bit outside of our content area, and how am I supposed to do these lessons? So Isis Buchanan, who's assistant superintendent, Assistant Director of Learning Achievement, has been meeting with a group of high school-specific representatives from each of our sites to talk about how can we implement this in advisory? What makes sense? Because advisory time is already packed with a lot of, lot of required and some optional kinds of things. But as we started looking at the plans that they had already created for advisory and the personal learning plans that are required by the state, a lot of the lessons absolutely align, and those are the kinds of things that is, advisory is a really, really good place to have the lessons take place, because they're with kids that you meet with year after year after year with the same teacher. So there's that comfort level that, that comes to be from being with the same group of students. So they're really working on, how does this align for us? Middle school has a little bit more time in advisory, so it was, you know, it was a much easier transition, but really figuring out what needs to be in advisory and what can be, and how we can support it with social-emotional learning. So they've been meeting, and they have a plan created so that they are ready to start implementing in December. And there is an additional advisory task force that's going to be starting, I think this Friday actually is their first meeting, and that's really looking at advisory, like what are we using advisory for? What's the purpose? How are kids feeling about advisory? How are teachers feeling about advisory? Are there tweaks that we can make in our advisory classes so that they're similar across the sites and that they meet the students' needs and the teachers feel confident in teaching those lessons that are required in all the different areas of, for advisory? So it's coming along, and I'm really excited to see it start happening in December and being able to visit some of those classrooms and meet advisory classes where advisory, where the social-emotional learning activities are taking place. The second thing in progressing is we have begun in collaboration with D O E E and Student Services, having staff attend cognitive coaching, which is a kind of a way of learning to work side by side with, with teachers that they are working with in a, in a more collaborative, listening way. And so they've had two sessions out of the eight so far, and the response to those sessions were amazing. People were felt very supported and had a lot of practical ways that they could bring this learning back into, into their daily work lives. And then the other piece was, and I think Dwayne may know what we're talking about at the N U A, a lessons, we've had teachers going to N U A workshops. They did a two-day workshop, learning about what we're hoping to combine these things and to be really centering on our student center in pedagogy, which is actually part of our vision card E that you'll be hearing about tonight. And so really learning about putting, putting students in the center of everything we do and really being thoughtful about how we provide that instruction so that we're listening to students' voice. And my on-target was, we have many program improvement process teams going on right now. We're really excited with the participation that we have from teachers across our system and some administrators also. We've, the elementary pilot, E L A team, has met twice now and had the, had training by the publishers of both pilot resources that they're using. They feel, they're excited about it, they're really starting to dig in, because they, they start there, doing the first 30 days in elementary English to kind of get the routines and procedures and do some of those foundational practice skills, and then they start diving in. And they're really excited about being able to dive into the materials. We have E L A for secondary happening, and they were actually meeting yesterday and today, really positive, excited about all the possibilities. And we have ongoing science and social studies, and also working on what this, what is health going to look like as we move forward in secondary. So that's all taking place, and again, started almost immediately as we started school. So that was exciting.
All right, I'm going to start with the challenges. As you heard, Steve, staffing has taken up a bit of our mind space this year, and it is no different in ASIO than it is across other systems. There have been some challenges and some tiny, I'd like to call them tiny gifts, as we have heard from our retired staff that they are willing to come out of retirement and to support our system in a variety of ways. I talked to somebody today who's willing to come back and give us about 200 hours of assessment time, and she said, I wouldn't do it for anybody else but ASIO, because she's coming back for ASIO Brooklyn Middle School, because she loves them and loves her staff. So I think it's also an opportunity for, for other people to feel appreciated in some ways, although I think that there is some stress on our system due to the staffing. We have been able to move some teacher F T E around, no E S P F T E around. But as I'm also hearing, we still, I was sitting next to my friend Boo here, and we were looking at all the openings. We have openings, and yet we are being able to hire. So it is a continuous process. We, I didn't get to wash a car, although I did get to talk to the people in the car saying, do you, anybody you know, would you like to, would you like to come work for ASIO or his schools? And I would say that the good part about that is that people had really good things to say about ASIO. None of them were actually looking for a job, but they were, they, they did take the stuff that offered to get it to their family members. The coordinators are working with principals, working on staffing to ensure that our students are safe to, and that they are getting the programming that they need. It's not all that we want, but the students are getting what they need. So it does create some gaps in some programming for, for students receiving resource services who do not have any adult support listed on their I E Ps. Resource teachers are, utilize adult support to, to support students, but when we are crunched like this, the, the staff goes to the legally required components of that, which are our students and our self-contained programs, and, and the students that have adult support identified, called out on their I E Ps. So we are continuing, continuing. So again, I say to anybody listening, if you know of anybody, send them my way. I've had the opportunity to talk to quite a few people. We are taking the opportunity to also work with some agencies. We're going to give it a shot. We have been working with nursing agencies. We have two, we have six openings, six nurse openings right now. We have been working with nurse agencies, and we will continue to do so. We have two other agencies that I'm exploring this staffing with them for our licensed and for our E S Ps. I'm exploring because there will be some with our union to ensure that we're not removing work from the unit as we move forward. So I work with H R and the union to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So on our progressing, as you are very well aware, we did the D M G group opportunity. We are working with Keri as a follow-up. We did meet, Corey and I and others met with the Keri group, Ken Gibbons, and they identified some opportunities. Kelly Wilson was there. We're going to continue that conversation. They thought that, given the information that, from the D M G group and the information that we shared, that there are some opportunities to move our way forward, to get teachers confident about their workload and about the other issues that they had brought to the table. In the on-target, you will be pleased to know that we have a district middle-level restorative practices cohort that has been put together by my friends, Evi and Amy Tollison and Jill Laney, along with C M R S and Equity Specialists from D O E E. And we're continuing training for staff, and by we, I mean Jimmy Hanks and team are continuing some training for staff on restorative practices. You heard about other student services updates through the collaboration with Learning and Achievement, and then just Dwayne will most likely talk a little bit more about this work and how we're all together.
Good evening, everyone. Brief update on year one with the Department of Educational Equity. First place to start is really with our system equity tools, where we are working on a refresh of E F T, so Equity Foundational Training 2.0, which will roll out in the fall of 2023, so for next year. And that would be all-encompassing and all-inclusive of a, a review that aligns to our policy 508 work that has already been initiated here in the district with our A A P I work, note there are, that has been functioning within our district with the George Floyd Resolution and with the L G B T Q I A plus History and Culture Resolution, which passed in June, and also incorporating American Indian Program Improvements, which is a part of our year one work. Part of our work is also specifically with the L G B T Q I A plus History and Culture Resolution, and in part, part that has been presented at last month's Learning Leader Meeting, but also at this month's on Thursday. And we are doing some collaboration with Learning and Achievement in terms of the rollout of lesson for 2023. We are also working on the American Indian Program Improvement, specifically with A I E and also in partnership with the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. This was the first year in over two years that we had our E F T 1.0 in person. So that was a really big win, over 210 licensed staff for all new teachers that replace us at the Brooklyn Park Communities Center. We are working with our newest team in D O E E, Family and Community Engagement Phase. They are already launching their, their year-long programs. As a matter of fact, happening right now is one of their programs over at ASIO Senior, which is centered on mental health. And they're radically investing in Scholars Excellence or RISE Committee is scheduled to meet later this month.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to check out everything, because there's a lot of work happening in D L T L, so that might be your biggest section or biggest department update of the night here. So we'll switch to the role of our Human Resources.
As with every other department, over the summer, there's a lot of work being done in Human Resources to get ready for the upcoming school year. Each summer, we work to update every single employee, over 3,500 staff in our system, updated in our E F P system. So we have to look at positions, we have to look at pay, we have to look at lead balances. We touch every single employee technically in our system over the summer to get ready for this school year. We also then take all of our new hires and enter all of the demographic data to make sure that they're placed not only for our buildings, but also for our budget responses, to make sure that we are budgeting appropriately with the budget codes and whatnot. So that's our technical work. Then we get to work collaboratively with a ton of different departments. Learning and Achievement, we get to work with Equity Department, Student Services, Kelly Wilson with our unions to work on our new teacher workshop. So we were able to hold new teacher workshop this year at Park Center. We did some virtual training, so we did some just-in-time, two weeks before the start of the new teacher workshop, we were able to give them some information about our mission, our strategic directions and our core values virtually. And then they came together to meet in-person at Park Center, and it was great, great energy. It was just tremendous amounts of energy. And then Learning and Achievement, Student Services and Equity, all the portions of training in person. And then this year, we've reserved some just-in-time training so that they don't get everything all at once when they're overwhelmed. So some of the next learning will be in October, or some other learnings that will happen just in time. What do you need to know before you head into conferences? What do you need to know before you head into the grading period? And so we're really excited to do some of that just at a later time when they're ready to absorb that new learning. Other core work includes in the employee handbook, deploying it for all staff. We had also a kickoff meeting with our Teachers of Color Mentorship Program. And then H R did their own kickoff meeting where we got to meet and talk through each of our new strategic objectives and our core values, and really work to align all of the work that's happening in H R and how it fits directly with our strategic directions and core values. New this summer was the expansion of our E S P Professional Development Liaisons. Thank you for giving us the budget to hire three of our E S P Professional Development Liaisons. And we worked this summer to see the intersection of all of the leads working for our E S Ps. So we have E S P mentors, we have our P D liaisons, and we have our building leads. And we are working to see how can they work together? They will be having some overlap, but we want to maximize their capacity in order to reach the most E S Ps that we can, to provide them with training, support, in the hopes that they retain, we retain those E S Ps throughout the school year, and they feel really confident about what they're doing with our students. So our E S P P D liaisons have met with each of the site leaders. They're meeting with them regularly to find out what are the needs, and then they're meeting with each of our E S Ps to provide them specialized support and, and/or group training. As you've heard, an area of challenge and an area that always is a focus for H R is our staffing shortage. We have worked with our recruitment and retention efforts. Just this summer, we had 13 events from July through September, both in the community, on the weekdays and weekends, as well as at each of our, many of our sites, where we try to capture an audience of parents coming in for orientations, or conferences, or levy presentations, giving out flyers. We've also enhanced our social media presence. We have an H R recruitment partner that we hired, and within a week, she was stolen by an Oka Hanipin and promoted into Susan Hanks' position. So we have not filled that position. Once we do, that will be another focus for that person. We have hired a consultant to help us with some of the additional social media as we try to recruit and retain staff. We continue to see vacancies in our nursing positions, which Kate Demins has talked about. These are historically hard to fill, but we have continued to support our buildings with our licensed positions. We have allocated a continuous teacher sub at every school building. So that is a person that will fill in, and then as a district, we can pull that person to fill in a different sub-position as we need to. What we've seen fortunately with the sub shortage right now is that we are back to pre-pandemic levels of open positions that are not filled by a substitute. So while we have always had a need for more substitutes, teachers and E S Ps, we are not at the spot where we were during the pandemic, where we were at pretty crisis level. So that is continuing to happen. We also are continuing our incentives. So any teacher substitute that works four days out of a four-day work week or five days out of a five-day work week earns an additional $250 for something for that weekend. We're trying to keep consistency for our sites and entice our substitutes to make ASIO areas the school of choice for them. We are continuing to provide voluntary training for our substitute teachers so they do feel prepared to go into those classrooms as well. And we will continue to work collaboratively with all of our leaders and departments on recruitment and retention efforts and continue to work to fill our positions. You do get an update every week from Corey with a link to our open active positions.
Very proud of our efforts. Everyone around us challenged the same problem of trying to fill so many positions, and I think we've done as well or better than anyone that I did. and I think we've done as well or better than anyone that I can see and I've talked to in the district. I think it's because of the effort of our team and building partnerships with our building leaders as well, so very proud of that. Even we're not there, but we are seeing improvements. Just a quick note, I didn't point this out earlier, but behind each item on your chart is one of the letters of one or more strategic protections to create that connection. So I'll turn it over to Brian Sieversen Hall with our community head update.
Yeah, thank you. So for us, the challenge you see on here, this is how staffing shortage just plays out for us in community education. We have about 365 students on our waitlist right now. The good news is, we have more students registered in KidStop than we did last year, but our waitlist is bigger than it was last year, which is probably very reflective of more working guardians and parents going back to offices, right, and needing childcare. So I think there's good news and bad news on the challenge. It's still a challenge. I think what I would add to what everyone else has said is, while we're not giving up on our recruitment efforts, I think we're going to focus primarily on ensuring that we retain our hourly staff that we have. Like, I think that's going to be probably our best lever to help with our waitlist, quite honestly. So I think that's an area we'll progress in with retaining the staff. In our progressing section, we started our community head leadership strategic planning and leadership development retreats for the year. So I'm invested, there's 18 of us, I'm investing into our coordinators and our program managers this year. We had our first retreat in June, and our second one was this morning out at Brooklyn Park Library. So I'm very excited about that. About, you know, the majority of the time will be spent on strategic planning, there'll be a section on leadership development, and then of course, some interpersonal relationship building. So we're thrilled with that. Brian Bass came out today and did a little leadership section for us this morning, so I'm going to bring in some guest folks to talk about their leadership styles at those. Our community head advisory council is a progressing area. I would say that is one area during the pandemic that we took a bit of a hit on our advisory council, which was a bummer because that's usually pretty strong for us. But our first meeting was three weeks ago now, and we had four new people join us. So I'm hoping to kind of build up the CPAC team again. Some things that are on target, our last work session, we all had the chance to be at AVE, and Emily Watts, a couple of our licensed teachers are starting our high flex learning, and by January, all of our AVE classes will be in high flex learning, which I think Emily explained is the ability to take a class either in-person or remotely simultaneously. Kind of a fun story, just a few weeks ago, I did back-to-back Fridays, and I signed up for one of our high flex learning classes. So I joined the, what would be the, these are all folks learning English, which was a third grade equivalent class. So on one Friday, I attended onsite with my three classmates and my seven other classmates online, and then the next week, I joined online. So the classes are awesome. It's like grammar, vocabulary, reading, conversational English, and I shared with some of the cabinet members, I'm very proud to announce, back-to-back weeks, I scored 20 out of 20 on the spelling test. Interpreter was on there. That's a hard, I'm like, that's third grade spelling? I was like, this is, this is good. But I think it's super cool, like we shared, it's, you know, it's one of those things that came out of the pandemic, that some of our adult learners who are new to the United States and have families and jobs, they loved being able to come on remotely, and so we're going with it. And we're, and thanks again to Anthony and the tech team. It's super cool. If you ever have a chance to do a three-hour class or something, it's pretty fun to experience it. I would say, it feels like, in my mind, all seven program areas are back with participation thriving. It was interesting to hear Sally say like rebuilding. Those are things we talk about. It feels like thriving to me after having a few years of declining. So maybe the right thing to say is it's stabilized, but everyone's up and running and doing well, which I think I'm thrilled about. And then last, I'd be remiss if I didn't give props to the enrollment center. They do amazing work, you know, while they do amazing work year-round, but the work that they do from August 1st-ish through September 15th or so is awesome and is non-stop. I think our staff, I asked Jim about it, and these are, a lot of them are hourly staff, you know, average 55 to 60 hours a week during that six weeks period, including working on the weekends, and they get, we have arrangements with comp time and time and a half and all those kinds of things, but folks are, do a huge amount of work. So that was on target, and I think those, you know, I didn't highlight all seven of our program areas, but I think those are the ones I'd want to share with this group for back-to-school. So thank you.
Right, so we're a little bit out or beyond our time, but the good news is, I think we're members, you've probably got the most updates right on a routine basis from, from Anthony, John, and the referendum stuff Kate sends you every week. So we're going to go a little faster to those off-street sections that we have some time. I'll have Anthony first.
Yeah, I think overall, the start of the school year from the technology standpoint went very well this year. It's always super busy at the beginning of the year, probably from mid-August all the way until what I say is about the end of September, first week of October, just kind of getting through the start of the school year, making sure we get connected, up and going. If you don't know, our team is the last team to go into every single classroom before teachers come in. So we have to wait for construction to get done, for custodial to come in, do final cleanup, and then we come in and make sure and test all the TVs and projectors and make sure all of that is ready to go before the teachers walk into the classroom. We also did a transition of, or a refresh of devices at the middle school, so we prepped just over 7,000 brand-new devices for middle school students over the course of the summer, got those up and ready to go, and handed out in exchange with all the middle school students. We're happy to get all of those devices into the hands of students. The secondary student group, you'll see, is, it doesn't look at 100% because we've got a lot of new incoming students still coming in, so working through getting accounts, making sure we're getting hardware shipped in over and getting those students prepped. So that is happening on a daily basis as new enrollments are getting finalized and starting in the system, but very soon, every student will be sure to have everything in their hands as they need. Also, a great big highlight was our staff technology deployment with our, one of our highest level of, I'm saying our incoming class of new employees this year. New teacher workshop started, and we only had 20 new teachers that weren't ready to have a device yet because of just paperwork that needed to be finalized. So that has been a significant transition to what we've had in the past, and getting that technology out in advance, new employees coming in for workshop weekend and having that prepped for training. Staffing is continuing to be all of our themes for our challenging place. We actually, you know, knock on wood, technology was in a better position this year staffing-wise than we were a year ago, but, but the positions that were open were some of our critical positions. So our, we have a tech transport van that we transport a lot of our technology resources around as we need to shuffle things around, and as new students are coming and we need to get hardware. The new transport person started this week, so we now have that position filled, so we've got a lot of staff kind of shuffling, driving back and forth between sites to try and fill that gap up until now, so we're in a pretty good space there. And support tickets are moving like they normally should. Interesting, we're kind of comparing the data from last September to this September, and we saw almost twice as many support requests coming in last September than we are seeing this year, which goes to show me that staff are feeling more comfortable with using the technology and the systems and can walk in and use it if things are prepped and ready to go. And we're seeing a difference in kind of the closure rate, an 88% closure rate this year compared to 96% closure rate, but the response time is from 10 days down to four days. So what we're seeing is this change of, even though the closure rate, there's, there's more open, it's because there's more significant issues that we're having to grapple with rather than a lot of, I just don't know how to connect my computer, or I forgot my password. We're seeing less of that and more of the complex issues that do take a little more time to process through on troubleshooting what's actually going on before we can get it resolved. So it's still a pretty good space, even though those numbers are very different from last fall to this fall, as our whole organization is evolving around a new engaged technology environment as we progress forward.
All right, thank you, Anthony. And John, for operations?
Okay, so I'm going to kind of go by department and each of the areas where they fall in. So starting with food and nutrition, and we'll go again quick here. Staff, staffing is probably the biggest concern, but we are making progress, I think we're seeing applications coming in on a regular basis, so thank you to HR for helping grow that. Supply chain issues, both manufacturers having their own staffing, which creates supply issues to us, and also from repair and maintenance side, we, we normally have our own in-house repair and maintenance position, which we've not been able to fill for over a year, so we're relying on outside vendors who are having similar shortages, and that's, that carries into, it can take, you know, multiple weeks to get repairs done, which has an impact on how we're serving food. Progressing in food service, the timeliness of meal service has improved dramatically. You know, we went in the last two years from just counting meals to actually having to scan or use a PIN now, and getting students retrained on how to do that. The vast majority of schools are using a barcode scan, which is considerably faster than entering a PIN, so we're moving in that direction. And then on target, free reduced numbers, we, we are currently at about 46% qualified. To put that in a little perspective for you, pre-pandemic, we were at 39.8%. This time last year, we were at 35%. So last year, if you look at compensatory money that's directly related to that, last year, we had 8 million, this year, we have 15 million, next year, we'll have 21. So those are moving. Really appreciate everybody and all the efforts they've put into getting those apps filled out, so people who deserve that benefit are getting that. Business services doesn't, isn't highlighting any challenges at the time. Progressing are the equitable contract procurement process that is a strategic direction. So we are working right now, we have all of our baseline data in and are strategizing actions to increase the percentage of diverse vendors that we're able to identify and use. On target, you've already heard about the audit results from the last meeting. We are starting on our, are working our way through the LRFP budget process for next year. Same thing, we're, we're on time and target with the levy process, and then also working on a student instructional material catalog, so purchasing is piloting a catalog in specific curricular areas that will be presented to all sites in mid-October, and they're kind of working on that. Transportation challenges are obviously in the driver shortage area. Now, it's not our shortage, it's our vendors', but we're routinely seeing between 10 and 20 routes a day that can't be covered, so then our team jumps in to reroute and combine those together. So far, we are still hitting, batting 100%, but this is a blow, slight breeze might take us down, so again, the house of cards analogy comes in. So, so we're working our best and doing our best. And we're starting to see, our vendors are starting to, again, same thing, I think you're starting to see applications coming a little more frequently. They're starting to, to be able to turn around applications better, which is good. Traffic is still a big problem at all of our sites, mainly due to an increase in either parent pickup, open enrollment, or also for us, the number of type-three vans that we are bringing in, that number has gone up considerably, and they're just clogging our areas. So we have a study in process this year to take a longer-term look at our traffic building by building. Progressing, some staffing turnover, the router, who's been our primary router for the last seven years, moved to Arizona, so we have filled that role, but are in a training process right now, so that's, fortunately, the old person helped us get school up and running and into kind of maintenance mode, so we really appreciate that. We have implemented the first View Late Bus app, which is doing well, we're just kind of refining as we go, but this is kind of GPS reporting on where the vehicles are, so what we've done is dramatically cut down the Where's My Bus phone calls, so you can look online and see exactly where it is. And then obviously, we'd also done the opt-in for the first time this year, where we, we have about 14,000 students who are eligible, but had well over 20,000 responses to this with at least 5,000 duplicates, so having to weed through that process was very much a learning curve, but we made it, and we'll hopefully update that so it runs a little bit smoother this next year. I think I had mentioned in your routing software is being switched in March, which will move to a web-based program, and just again, will improve efficiency and the route design should help us a lot. Risk management, similar to last year, we're still seeing a higher number of potential issues with either threatening language or things along those lines, so we're working very closely with DLTL, and mainly at the secondary level with Kelly and her team to make sure those are being addressed. On target, this year, risk management went out and trained every single front office staff on all our security protocol calls and tools, did about 50 different trainings were completed to make sure everybody understands what tools are available for them there. Last group, facilities, biggest battle here with 67 projects that we finished over the summer was the ongoing inflation and, and supply chain issues with getting materials and getting labor to turn those things around. We were able to pull it off, but a good example of continuing shortages are today, if we wanted to order an air handling unit, it has a 67-week lead time. So things we want, that we are going to bid for, for next summer, we probably can't get. So we're, we're working with vendors to try to do that, but that's an example of today's number. Things progressing, a big appreciation to HR for the settling the custodial contract with significant increases in the amount of the base wages. It's definitely helping with hiring, so we really appreciate that. Our LTFM bond premiums came back very positive, which allows us to cover a lot of those inflationary costs and stay within our budget. And then finally, on target, despite a lot of challenging conditions over the summer with supply chain and labor, we were able to get all major renovations products, projects completed, up and running, air moving in all the buildings that it needed to be on time and under budget. LTFM expenditure numbers again are on target, and we are planning our way through 2024 LTFM. And I will hand it over to Kate.
Before we do that, just one additional piece of all the things we're working on that I want to call out. We're still wrapping up our work over the next month on our evaluation of the budget reporting, your options may be out there for our Eastern Reporting System. So there's, we're still kind of recording, just to get the year started, we're also doing that evaluation. Kate, thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
As you know, there's nothing illegal, so Tim has nothing for us.
All right, I'm going to actually go from right to left, so I'm going to start with On Target. So we did a lot of preparation mainly in August to prepare for back-to-school, so we did a lot of work to put together the system leader's presentation, and then our all-staff kind of livestream event as well, so did a lot with that. Just sharing back-to-school information, there's so many things that families need to know before they enter school, so making sure they, they knew that information, and it sounds like really good news with our free reduced meal application, so that's great. We had a first-day message from Superintendent McIntyre that was shared out with staff and families, and then we had a lot of coverage just out in the building, making sure we're doing some first-day photos and getting those smiling faces as they're coming into school. And then our print shop had really high levels, probably pre-pandemic, maybe even higher levels of jobs, over 200 just in August alone, so we're starting to really keep track of that as we move forward, but very high levels of print jobs. In the progressing stage, the Building a Better Future Referendum, that's a lot of our focus right now, so we're in the middle of a 12-week plan. All of our schools have been trained in and have 12-week communication plans as well, so we're in actually week eight, believe it or not, the election is four weeks from today. Just some things, I'm not going to, I know you're on the updates, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. So our required mailer that we are required to send out is going in the mail this week, so you, if you, our, our families will be receiving that, and any voter will be receiving that. We have our last community informational meeting next Tuesday. We're doing tons of presentations right now, making sure that everyone is aware of the referendum. Just today, we went to the Maple Grove Rotary to, for them to hear more about the referendum, and like I said, we're doing a lot more as well. Overview video and the logical consequences video, so what if the referendum fails video, both of those are our highest videos right now, so if you're just trying to think of things, you share those ones, I really, just getting a lot of hits. It's very quiet, just in my referendum experience so far, I would say it's very quiet in regards to like phone calls and emails, questions on the referendum overall. I'm talking to other districts, there's not a lot of other districts going out for referendums, but they're feeling and hearing similar things too. So it doesn't sound like it's unique to us, but it is very quiet, and it, obviously, a very noisy election season as well. In regards to the district-wide communication plan, we are working on our Have You Heard newsletter, that's the four-page newsletter, this will be the second time that we have that go out. We also have our new media newsletter, so that goes to media each week. We are getting, I think, a little bit of an increase. They do have low resources, I would say, overall, media-wise, but I think, I think we are getting a little bit more coverage in relation to that. You probably noticed our e-newsletter times have switched to Tuesdays. We have a lot higher open rates with our families with that move, so we're hoping we actually are probably going to bump up the staff e-newsletter, just to time up a little bit more to try to get even more readership with that as well. just to time up a little bit more to try to get even more readership with that as well. Our staff spotlight, that was the first one. That was actually an add-on our communication plan. That was something that we didn't have before. But we did our first spotlight, I think it was last week. It was on Mona Preston. She's the front desk person over at Maple Grove Senior High. And that is just going gangbusters on social media right now. So definitely share that out. But it's, people are loving it. And then the next month, we're going to be doing a grad spotlight. So looking forward to that. We also, as Superintendent McIntyre mentioned, we're doing the kindergarten information fair on this Saturday. So those are just some of the highlights in relation to the district-wide communication plan. We also have our new mass notification tool and that's been going really well. I would say a lot of people are saying that it's pretty user-friendly, so good here. Things are going well with that so far. I'm just answering questions, but haven't been getting a slew of them. So I think things are going really well. District and school website updates, just continuing to do those. And then in relation to the print study, we're just kind of getting ready for that launch in the publications team as well. One thing that I probably should have added into the grad spotlight or to the challenges area would be just kind of in comparison, hearing kind of what Kelly shared earlier. We had seven, these are crisis situations when community relations is involved and we share out communications. This year, we've had seven in September. Last year in September, we had just two. So just to, just some comparison.
You read my mind, so I like the partnership. We continue to have a strong partnership that we saw in our June and August presentation to our administration team, our local law enforcement, our management team. And I share, Kelly's key work with our building principals. That requires a lot of coordination and quick response times. And we are going to be a, I don't know, chief coordinator at Maple Grove. We have a kind of a district team that meets with all of our police departments. That's our goal, community college leaders as well. Just what are, what are the things we're seeing in community, we're seeing at school? Because it's kind of crossover a lot. So it's a broader way for us to come together and just evaluate and identify issues that we can maybe help each other work through. I think one of those challenges though, again, back to where I started with, a much different start to the year, a much different field to the start of the year. And I could, we could, this document could have been four times as long. And it was really hard, I think, for us to compare this to the highest level items because there's so much, so much work that's happening in the system. So I appreciate our teams' efforts to try to, try to highlight, to do the highest level items. There's probably many, maybe more than they offer in school. But in regards to what you heard tonight, we're members of, maybe it's some time to ask any follow-up questions that you have while our, our whole team is still here. Go ahead.
So my, one of the, you know, key concerns with staffing, special education, considering one of our most high-needs populations. So it's good to see that there's been some work to try to problem solve that. Is that being communicated up and down, kind of tops-down, bottom-up? Because I think our special education, teachers and ESPs really need to feel supported and heard and that issues that they're raising are being worked or addressed. Is that, do we have that mechanism? Is that happening where we've got tops-down, bottoms-up communication connection?
I don't want to speak for myself. I know what my answer is, but I would say yes, and we're doing the best we can. If there were more people, like, if there's a solution that are out that we haven't found yet, our, all of our neighboring districts are short, just as much short-handed with us. So I think our team and with our principals have done as good a job as anyone in the world. You know, how can we support the classrooms that are shorthanded? We've been trying to move staff, we've been trying to work for union groups. It's been not always easy, about figuring out what's different staff around where the high speeds are and so many contain our legal requirements. So, and pushing on our legislators, pushing on MBE on licensure. How can we make some of those things a little bit easier? Minnesota's not always been an easy state to move into, especially in special education. So we're lobbying to get some lessons learned about that tonight.
There are some things that we depend on principals for, especially at those sites where they are shorthanded, because we're definitely communicating with them to see if they are having openings. What is their success rate, what is it they need? And then trying to take that out to the greater system to see if we can provide those goals for them. But it is, am I communicating individually with staff?
No. And we deploy, I don't want to speak for either of us, we deploy those staff that we can at the district level to help support in the classrooms where we have a correlation training states and places. But very specific.
But I know that you've connected with principals too. And I think with some, most recently with some staff members when there's recurring questions that have come up. So I don't know.
I deserve, I mean, I've attended meetings that they've asked me to come and speak. Then I have attended half-specific schools to discuss it. But in general, no, I'm letting teachers work, so no. But if they, if you hear somebody that would like some communication, I'm happy to go out to schools and discuss and to talk and to see what they're doing. But in general, the coordinators and I are in touch with the principals, trying to keep track of what their building needs are and then to assist them.
One additional question, so on the threats. You know, as we think with the start of the school year, it really is about what is the students', what are the scholars' experience so far as well? And all of these initiatives certainly could, you know, make that happen. Where are we at on behavior incidents? Are we feeling that this year is starting out better than the prior year? Because we need to ensure that there's safe classrooms that are free from disruption. Do we feel like this has improved versus last year?
Kelly, Stephen, maybe Amy, Lunt, I've been on the show. I don't know if you want to. What I've heard, I've shared with I've heard.
I can anecdotally, having to the many sites, by far, the message from principals is that it's been a much more positive start to the year. I think we're coming to the time where we call the honeymoon is over, where we're starting just to see kind of some of those typical, the typical behaviors of students that we would expect to see at this time. I can certainly get back to you with any specific questions related to the data. So I hear you asked about comparing around this time here. We're not, we're looking at data, but typically, we've given you, you know, at different breaking points throughout the year, whether it be after try one or try two, to take that time period to compare. But I certainly can get back to you with that information.
Okay, thank you.
And the first month really is spent, Kelly, Stephen speak this morning, setting routines and expectations.
Yeah, we'll certainly.
A lot of, just a lot of practice on all those, on these set of expectations and routines on our site. So if you want to speak any more to that.
I would, I would, you know, to take a gap after your question, Atanya, even though, like Kay and I mentioned, we've had some social media-type threats, more so than we have at the start of last school year, for example. But the principals at the secondary level, and that's obviously, you know, where the majority of our behaviors are going to occur, the principals at the secondary level are still to a person unequivocally feeling that this has been a better start that they have experienced for years. And so it's odd, because I'll even say, for me personally or for Kay, I think we've often said, oh, no, here we, another communication. Okay, it's another Friday night and I'm on the phone with you. You know, we've talked about that. But yet in the build these, and they've been unfounded, unfounded social media threats, which that's important to concern. But unequivocally to the person in the buildings, they have felt that the buildings feel so good and that they've really gotten off to a really good start. And you can feel it when you're in the building, you know, the excitement. So, you know, the social media threats are, that is what we're going to continue to battle. And it certainly is not axial. It's all over.
I would just add anecdotally, kind of similar to what Amy was sharing. The thing that I would just note is comparing it just, again, in my mind, the conversations I was having with leaders last year compared to this year, I'm not hearing from them the same level of concern around student readiness coming in. So to Cory's point, a lot of that time at the front end, especially in the elementary, is about routines. But I'm not hearing definitely the same amount of concerns that I was last year at this time.
It's a great feeling in the building. It really just is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, I just wanted to comment on the period of action with the threat line of accountability. I love that. I think that's really a great way to, like you said, Cory, like kind of fill the script and model from the top down. So that it's not perceived as negative when we're holding people accountable, but more of a setting expectations and following around them. I really appreciate that because that's one thing that continues to get being throughout our community is wanting transparency and trust within us. And I think the greatest way we can show them that is by being accountable. I have a small question about safety and emergency preparedness. Drills, a student concern has brought to me about drills. And it's kind of a silly thing, but, you know, they do all the different safety drills. But they don't do them in every single class. So if they set up, it'd be very time-consuming. But each type of classroom is different, each setting is different. And so is there a, you know, an overall, like in a tornado, this is what happens? And then a quick five-minute, in my classroom, in a tornado, this is where we shelter? Or saving like a lockdown or fire drill or like running, you know, telling the kids, like this is where our fire drill exit map is? So they're oriented in each different space that they're in when a situation occurs?
Well, I can, first of all, out of the malls, babes, right? Yeah, seriously. And because I've been sitting here thinking, I know that one of the things that he asks principals to go over with the staff when they start each school year is we have the fire evacuation pathways, the maps and the tornado maps are all posted in the classrooms and we ask them to be sure as well who that. But I think that that's something that would be really important to have Troy have known specifically at as well. Because when we do a tornado drill day, you're right, it always occurs at like one fifteen or something. It always does. So they're always going to know where to go if they're in that hour. But certainly, every teacher of that day would take two seconds, thirty seconds to review what they're doing. So I think that's a genius idea, really. And, you know, because you're right, anything can happen when they're, you know, in any part of the building. What we do really encourage around fire drills and those other drills is to do them at very different times of the day. So that students might be at lunch or actually do one during lunch. Because that's entirely different than if you're in the third hour. So, you know, we, we make sure that they do that. But I love the idea of just every teacher on those days reviewing again with the students. So, yeah. We know as a teacher, we tell students that this, we're practicing so that we can practice in an emergency situation, listening to the adults in charge. And so I don't think we can prepare for every situation of where everything is. If they have that practice of, quickly, have to listen to the, you know, whoever is in charge and go do it, then they're more likely to do it in whatever situation it is. So that's what I, I mean, I would say to a student is. And I think maybe encourage our teachers to say to students, this is practice. We have to be quiet because there might be directions over this. Or so that we can, this is the time that you really have to listen and follow, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah, I guess what I was kind of thinking about our secondary schools where they're not a barter and the spaces are quite different. Some of them have multiple levels and different types of routes and things like that.
That's why it's more important to listen to the adults and their students. Because there's no way you could.
I love it.
So another question I have is, and comment, I guess, is I am happy to hear about the collaboration with Community Resources and TSHLED and EMO and trying to solve some of these problems. But, and that's all very positive. And obviously, we have a ratio of a hundred percent resolution. I'm happy we have a lot of work to do still, a lot of shortages. Obviously, the most common theme here. The two things that I'm concerned about is, are we having an increase in IEP requests to add things to IDPs in order to have that legal compliance for students' IDPs? And then are we seeing an increasing grievances from staff due to workload, staffing difficulties, et cetera?
So I think, so grievances, not, is that a formal question?
That would be more like a HR thing.
We're not saying that the formal, am I talking to people that are feeling like, oh, my gosh, we're short a teacher, so our caseloads are higher? Yes. I mean, if they were, so ASU Senior High is down a resource teacher and their caseloads are at nineteen point six as compared to seventeen point two. I mean, it's just two kids or two points, whatever it would be. But it was, it's still a consideration. So I think, as you knew from the DMG group audit, that workload is always a consideration for our special ed staff and this is something. The other thing that I'm seeing though, is in places like Edinbrook where they're, the strategies teacher is a teacher who's got an out-of-field license. That the special ed teacher is just like, you know, I'll pick up the due process. They're tight-kitted for it, they're being paid for it, but they're willing to help. And that's what I'm actually seeing more of in the system is, are people stepping up and saying, I'm willing to take that a little bit more? And maybe because they get to choose as opposed to having a feel like it's forced on them that that's been beneficial. The other question I think I heard was, are we, are people adding things to the IP so that they can get it rather than?
Yeah, if it was, if it was previously like a bonus, like it just happened. And then now, like you said, we're only getting those minimum legal requirements due to staffing. If parents are coming in and saying, I need the IP.
So we have, it's, it's not, when a parent comes into an IP meeting, there's certainly one voice. And in order for support to be on the IP, there's some considerations. It's not just, oh, okay, let me just sign up for that. It is the data. So where do we see it? When do we see it? How do we see it? What does that look like? What other supports are in place? What does that, what does the schedule look like? Who else might be available? There's a lot of questions and processes that we go through before we add, just because it's, yeah. Like, oh, okay.
I think that really helps us that other districts don't have. We have special building coordinators. Many districts do not have that extra resource. So that has been helpful.
The due process ESPs.
The due process ESPs, many districts do not have that. So that has really softened a bit of the pain. And then the due process, I'm sure the board did some extra efforts that the board's trying to make in support of that. So those things that help us, whether some of the problems.
One last question for Laurel. The just-in-time learnings for trainings, I love that idea. But I'm also curious about our group of teachers who are more like, I want all the information ahead of time. Can they access that earlier?
Yes, they could, probably not through the formal process, but certainly through their colleagues in some mentorship within a department or at a level. Absolutely.
Okay.
We have special inventors and they're one-to-one. So if they have any, at least for staff, that they would be able to get any information.
And if there's additional ones, we can take offline too. We're having to follow up. You might think of a number more. I think there are a lot of you here, so please feel free to send those to any of our leaders to follow up. More clarification.
I have one final question and then I'll ask the other ones offline. Back to the principal support academy and the accountability line. So we talked about scholar to teacher to principal. So in the student survey, there were some items related to study skills, individual scholar accountability and getting the skill that they need to be accountable for their learning. Is that in the model? And then secondly, parents, are parents in the model in terms of engaging on what that scholar need is?
Our principal support academies, really, how do we empower our principals to be an instructional leader in the building? Their instructional leadership academies, how are they leading the teachers in the building around being as strong and instructional in your classroom? And how can they support them as their building principal? Really centering back on, I always say doubling down on instruction, like what if you're really getting results? Because I think that kind of conversation happens more on the principal and teacher level.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Not so much from the, what we do to support the principals, it's at that classroom level, embedded into that ILA model, right? It's really the centering on what is best practice? And then as the building leader, am I seeing those best practices happening in the classroom?
It might show up in some of our conversations too, especially around, you mentioned, survey data or something on that lines, any kind of information that comes in. And, you know, finds that space in the meetings that we have with the principals too.
Yeah, I know what you're referring to, Cory. That primarily any involvement with parents and the scholars themselves is going to occur through the instructional leadership academy and that work. In fact, we do our principal support academy work. We always get tired and scolded, actually, because we want to talk about other things other than the principle. And it is all about. because we want to talk about other things other than the principal, and it is all about the principal and their work.
Thank you.
Good, sorry, we're a little bit over time, everyone can just kind of take care of their own needs as we move forward.
Just one thing, yes. So I want to take offline, if you guys can help me, Laurel and Kate, my understanding that there's state statute that sets instructional ESPs have to have a certain, or a certain type of requirements. So I kind of want to know what is our practice, what are the barriers? Has that been a barrier for some of our ESPs to be able to get a job or retain a job? And what can we do legislatively to, you know, advocate for our ESPs? And as in my experience, we're losing a lot of ESPs of color because of some of the requirements.
So those are true for Title I schools, that they have to pass the parent rule, so that does affect a certain number of, and?
Where we want, people where we want their, thank you.
All right, so I'm just going to set this up for Brian and our team on our next agenda item. So again, this is our very first monitoring report, I do our brand new strategic plan, so this is our, we're excited about the feedback from all of you, and this will be our work in progress, right? So I was talking to Brian earlier, and he was so excited about getting feedback from board on kind of where we had it here. One of five monitoring reports, they come to you every other month, we spread them out, remember that calendar that we mapped out, so this is our strategic direction E. And again, the first time that we've put this together, I want to have, Brian O'Brien will acknowledge our vision card steering committee, we're now getting to, I was joking with Simon Zelber tonight, he's been asking for this for like four years I've been on the board, and we're finally here tonight, so. Really just, it's our first attempt at getting this alignment, taking our vision cards and tying those back to that strategic plan, operational plan, departmental plan, right? And this will become our norm, so, and then each year we'll review and make modifications to the targets that we've set. So there will be a lot of learning, put it that way, there will be a lot of learning on this. Around, it's primarily you and the team that are going to walk us through the first monitoring report ever.
Woo, all right, thank you, thank you. Corey, I just want to acknowledge the vision card steering committee, members included from our ops team, BJ, Ermiter, Emily Woolsey, from Family Community Engagement, Vanessa Gill, directors, Dewayne Wardali, Kate Emmons, Robin Manzolis, assistant director of Student Services, Jill Lene, assistant director of learning achievement, Isis Buchanan, Shayna Quontantura, one of our equity specialists, and Gal Thor, along with Jenna and Tom and myself, so.
Can I jump in right before you go? So our members, our approach of this is we'll get an executive summary document, right? And then the presentation is meant to be a little more higher level, because of our attempt to give you work at that time for you to prepare, and a little less in the actual meeting as far as getting deep, now this time maybe a little bit, because we're launching some things, and the goal is we'll get that paper dive of the work session, a little even lighter version of this at the board meeting itself, the report session and the board meeting itself. That's the intent behind the documents, the way to sharpen the idea.
And the monitoring report does provide some additional links to additional data and additional reports, and if there's pieces there that you feel that you'd like to have more information on, please don't hesitate to let us know. As Corey said, our, our challenge in our first iteration is that there isn't, how did we do this last year, right? Or how did we do this previously? And I think our conversations were consistently grounded in our mission, vision, and values, that that's where we're coming from, we're trying to honor that. And then with our strategic direction, we look at our high priority initiatives and we say, what are the indicators that give us the opportunity to measure our progress? And this is a baseline year, right? So we're not necessarily, so this is the starting point, right? Because we've just adopted our strategic plan, so this is year one, establishing our year one data. So I, our team is presenting tonight is Robin and Jenna and Tom from our data assessment team, and thank you, Gal, for attending as well, also on our data and assessment team. And so I think I should, because of time, I should just turn this over and add, put more words in this space, because I can, but I'll get it over to Robin and the team.
I just wanted to orient people on the documents here, just so that, because they're back-to-back, and it may be a little bit confusing. The first sheet is the vision card E, so what it looks like, and then on the back of that are some, it's really a slide, paper slide presentation that we're going to be going through, so if you want to follow along on the paper. And then behind that is the executive summary or the monitoring, monitoring report that we have, and then at the very back are some of the data pieces that Brian talked about having weeks to, if that makes sense. So we'll just start, and I'll talk about the purpose. So today we're hoping to give you information on baseline data for the high priority initiatives for strategic direction E, and to provide understanding around the alignment of the operational plan to the vision card data collection. We decided as a system that vision cards will serve as critical data points toward the realization of the desired daily experience of our students, staff, and families. And so the vision cards really measure the district's success in achieving the strategic directions. They provide the data to support and assess progress towards the narrative vision outlined in the strategic roadmap. Vision cards set the ongoing district goals for performance and continuous improvement. So as we're going through that, really, that was the lens that we had as we were creating the vision cards and really building them all. The three-year operational plan, learning work, and implementation work initiatives, and standard work practices are the high priority work that we are engaged in to positively impact to the indicators on vision card E. The three learning work initiatives are the instructional leadership academy that we talked to earlier, also the principal support academy that Kelly referred to, which is through the Centers of Educational Leadership. Also, as we were speaking earlier, about refining new equity tools for system-wide implementation and researching best practices for student-centered pedagogy. The implementation work that is aligned to vision card E is the, creating a vision card baseline, which truly, this is a learning work also, because it's the first time we are presenting data in a way that is aligned to the strategic directions. As we began preparing this data and reflecting on the indicators on each vision card, we realized that what was missing from vision card E was that idea of the impact of the multi-tiered systems of support that we are currently working on in our learning work, and I think on our, on our strategic, on our three-year operational plan is really in section B, but we found that it really is A, B, and kind of the work that we do around that multi-tiered systems of support impacts E. So that's, we are having a hard time separating and pulling things apart. So just know that as we're moving forward, we realized as we're going through that, probably should be here also. So tonight we're going to present on the baseline data on four of the indicators on vision card E. Leadership and continuous improvement review, staff recruitment and retention, achievement of state standards, and intervention impact. We will not be reporting on the strategic leadership review, as this year we are learning how to quantify and report on the data through the talent ed platform. So we haven't, we're still working on what that would look like, how we can share that information out. In the presentation, in the presentation, the paper presentation, there's a graphic that explains the levels of data as described in the book Street Data, which we talked about last time when we met with you. The data that was collected for vision card E is that very high level of data, the data that we call satellite data. The data is, that kind of satellite data is, can be used to measure the district's progress towards achieving the strategic directions, but lacks the specificity required to transform instruction or make decisions on programming, as the data varies greatly across our system, across our schools, and even within the school. As I said earlier, you're going to see baseline data on each indicator of the vision card. Our goal through aligning our work to the strategic directions in the three-year operational plan is to positively impact the indicators on the vision card. On the vision card E, you have tonight, you will see that there are numbers across the top. Moving forward, the numbers will be replaced with the words that the numbers represent. So one is intervene, two is concern, three is baseline, four is progress, five is vision. And those changes will help clearly identify the progress monitoring levels that we're working towards. So Tom is going to start with indicators E1 and E2.
Right on. Good evening, everybody. If you are working right through the packet on page 12, that's the slide that I'm starting with, and so that's leadership and continuous improvement. And in terms of our vision card indicators, we have some that are process indicators and some that are outcome indicators, and this is one of our process indicators. And so it's adult actions that are intended to yield some kind of outcomes for scholars. So E1 looks at the extent in which shared leadership and decision-making structures are present at multiple levels of the district and are organized to ensure participation of diverse stakeholders, all the while addressing systemic inequities. And when we look at E1, again, the learning work initiatives that Robin mentioned previously are really pertinent here, so the instructional leadership academy for cohort three, principal support academy, and refining the new equity tools, those are all important adult actions, leadership movements within this indicator. So here we're using results from the Equometrics survey, which went out all staff in May of 2022. And there's three scales, which are groups of questions that we're focusing on here, and these seem to fit E1 the best. These are alignment, equity, and leadership. And the minimum cut score for level four, progress level, corresponds to a benchmark from Equometrics. The ranges for the other levels are based upon what's reasonable and challenging, given the range of scores for our district and from other districts surveyed by Equometrics. And then also within Equometrics, there's consistency across the scales that's maintained from a measurement standpoint, and so that's why all of those scales, we're going to see have the same benchmark levels of equity. If I move to slide on page 13, here we can see the three scales that are used to measure indicator E1, and the specific questions on each of those scales. Alignment incorporates resource allocation and encouragement of staff to support diversity, equity, inclusion, and cultural competency, and 62% agree or strongly agree with these questions. The equity scale is about access to resources and opportunities, support and representation for underrepresented populations, and 55% of staff agreed or strongly agree with these questions. And leadership includes the authenticity, understanding, ownership, and inclusiveness of leaders when it comes to individual differences and diversity, and 62% of staff agree or strongly agree with these questions. So if I move on to page 14, we can see that E2, that's our next indicator here, that's staff recruitment and retention, and this is also a process indicator, so it's talking about the adult actions. And we have two measures for this indicator, the first is the percentage of licensed staff who are people of color. And from 2019 to 2022, it increased from 8.0 to 9.3%. And our second measure is a single question on the Equometrics survey, on which staff indicate their level of agreement with this statement. My organization seeks diversity in our hiring practices. Our baseline here is 62% of staff agreeing or strongly agreeing with this statement. If we move on to page 15, this page gives more detail as well. As priority work has continued on recruitment and retention, our percentage of teachers of color has steadily increased over the past nine years. On the Equometrics perception question, we can also compare the 63% agreeing or strongly agreeing with the 37% disagreeing, strongly disagreeing, or neutral. And I wanted to just have a shout out to Gal for her work in terms of collecting the state benchmark information, it was really helpful for the benchmark setting for this. Go on to slide 15.
Slide 16? Yes, so slide 16, or page 16 in your packet. On this slide, we'll take a look at the results for indicator E4, which is an outcome measure. So as previously mentioned, if the process indicators or the adult behaviors are strong, we would expect strong results for student outcomes. So this is our theory of action. If adult actions are being implemented with fidelity, we would expect to observe strong results for our student outcomes as well. We'll monitor this theory of action to ensure that we do the correct indicators to measure, measure in order to move toward our vision and vision. Equity work is first and foremost pedagogical. This quote by Safer and Dugan from Street Data, that sets the context for the high priority initiatives in this indicator. A learning work initiative in the District III operational plan for 2223 that is closely aligned to E4 is researching best practices for student-centered pedagogy. Also aligned to E4 is our learning and implementation work around multi-tiered systems of support and the program improvement process that is taking place in a variety of subject areas. In this indicator, we can see five metrics, MCA reading and math proficiency, MCA reading and math progress, and access for ELs progress, or ELP. The MCA is our state standardized assessment that measures students' mastery of A-level standards. The access for ELs assessment measures scholars' progress and proficiency in learning English. Something to note about the MCA indicators is that we're reporting the median proficiency of our scholar racial and ethnicity groups. This was done to make sure that the metric ties back to the intent of our strategic direction, where we're working to address, acknowledge, and reduce systemic disparities, barriers, and inequities. Using the median of groups helps to mitigate the effect of large student groups on the overall results, and the proficiency rates among small student populations become invisible when aggregated at the overall district level. Additionally, students need to be enrolled by October 1st to be counted in these proficiency percentages. So the goals along the top of the vision card, the colored numbers, one through five, differ depending on the metric, you can see, and these differences were designed intentionally to make sure the goals for each metric were reasonable yet challenging. The goals were set by analyzing the results of nine comparison districts, and these comparison districts were selected based on size and demographic makeup, making sure that they closely aligned to Osseo area schools. These district's data were used to determine the upper and lower boundaries for the goal ranges, and the ranges were adjusted so that Osseo's percentages fell into that third or yellow color-coded range, as this is the baseline here. Ranges were also adjusted to ensure that they were equal across each goal, so each goal, for example, having a difference of five. We can see in the first metric, the median percentage for MCA reading proficiency was 48% in 2019 and 40% in 2022. When we look at the median percentage for MCA math proficiency, we see a larger decrease, which follows national trends in proficiency post-pandemic, going from 45% to 30%. The MCA progress metric is an accountability measure designed by MDE, and it tracks students' achievement level year over year. The achievement levels assigned to students based on their scores are does not meet, partially meets, meets, and exceeds state standards. And the metric only counts students that have both a spring 2021 MCA score and a spring 2122 score. The percentage reported represents the median rate of scholars who improved their achievement level or maintained their level at partially meets or higher. Scholars made median MCA reading progress at a rate of 66% in 2019 and 60% in 2022. The median MCA math progress rate was 57% in 2019 and 50% in 2022. The median MCA math progress rate was 57% in 2019 and 50% in 2022. The access for ELs progress, or ELP, metric is also an accountability metric that was developed by MDE. And it is used to measure the average progress made by English learners towards their individual growth targets. So the way that we interpret these percentages is that scholars receiving EL services made it 53% of the way to their targets in 2022. And in 2019, English learners made it 64% of the way to their growth targets. We move to page 17. We can see here the table that shows the nine districts that we're using for comparison when setting goals for the E4 metrics. Again, these districts were chosen based on size and comparable demographics to Osseo area schools. The Mountview School District now, or Row, is highlighted in green as that district set the upper boundary for goals across all five metrics. The St. Paul Public Schools set the lower boundary in median MCA reading and MCA math proficiency. St. Cloud set the lower boundary in median MCA reading and math progress. And Minneapolis set the lower boundary in access for ELs progress. We can see that Osseo area schools ranks fourth out of 10 on several of these metrics, including the MCA reading median proficiency, median math proficiency, MCA math median progress, and EL progress. And then Osseo also tied for second out of 10 on the MCA reading progress. And we can move to page 18. And here we'll talk about indicator D5, which is another outcome indicator. We can see three metrics tied to this indicator for intervention impact, which are ADSES reading, ADSES math, and IM4. ADSES is a state-funded program designed to provide scholars with additional academic or behavioral support with the goal of reducing inappropriate referrals for special education services. The IM4 intervention platform uses an evidence-based problem-solving process that increases the likelihood of success when delivering social, emotional, and behavioral interventions. Effectiveness of intervention was defined as making greater than average growth, or stated another way, aggressive growth, or exiting the intervention. So as mentioned before, the goals were customized for each metric to ensure that they're realistic yet challenging. The goals for ADSES metrics were determined by analyzing the school-level results. And the only schools that were included were ones with an N size of 20 or more within District 279. These school-level results were used to determine the upper and lower boundaries for the goal ranges. Ranges were adjusted, so this year's results fell into that third or yellow color-coded range, as this is the baseline year again. Ranges were also adjusted to ensure that they were equal across each goal. The goals for the IM4 metric were based on discussion with the IM4 staff about what is a challenging yet realistic goal. And the recommendation from them was to use a combination of trend and benchmark data. The benchmark of 80% was provided as a quote-unquote gold standard for intervention exit. And the ranges below 80% were established based on previous year's results with the expectation that this year's results are baseline. Because a 2122 school year was the first year of implementation of ADSES, we have one year of data represented in the vision card. Other years have NA or not applicable reported. Of the students who participated in the ADSES reading intervention and were assessed on FastBridge reading assessments in the fall and spring, 53% made better-than-typical growth or exited the intervention. Typical growth is considered approximately one year's worth of growth. And students in intervention need to make better-than-typical growth or aggressive growth in order to achieve, close that achievement gap and master the grade level standards. So therefore, this metric only includes those that reached grade level standard or made that gap closing growth or aggressive growth. And we're defining aggressive growth as making growth at the 75th percentile or higher. And that equates to about a year and a half worth of growth. The ADSES math intervention results, similar to the ADSES reading program, includes students who participated in ADSES math and were assessed on FastBridge AMATH assessments in the fall and in the spring. And of those students who participated and were assessed, 41% made better-than-typical growth or exited. The IM4 platform's first year of implementation was a 2019-2020 school year. And what you'll see in your packet for rates of exit from the IM4 intervention were 47% for 1920, 45% for the 2021 school year, and 61% for the 2122 school year. As we've been working with the IM4 team continuously, we have learned that there were multiple past students incorporated into the initial numbers we were given. So, and I guess another thing was that these were rates initially of intervention exit, not rates of students exiting intervention. So that means that students could be assigned more than one intervention in the system, and they would be counted for each intervention to which they were assigned. So essentially, they could be duplicated in the data. So once we learned that, we abbreviated the analysis. And the actual rates of intervention, which will differ from what's in the packet, are 45% for the 1920 school year, 48% for the 2021 school year, and 67% in the 2122 school year.
So one more time, Jenna, around those numbers represent the percent of students who experienced?
Um, it's representing percent of exits from intervention.
Exits from intervention, so, okay.
So not, it's not a percent of students, it's a percent of intervention exits because students could be assigned more than one intervention and exit for more than one intervention potentially.
So if 100 interventions were entered in 2020, 47 of them exited?
Right.
Okay.
No, I think that's the other thing important to prioritize, right? Robin, the reading and the math is not?
Um, so, reading and, so, for ADSES, um, reading is K12 and math is K8. K9.
What, they're both K9?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Sorry, reading is K9 and math is K8.
8.
8, there's no math in ninth grade.
No.
We, and the reason that was decided is we really looked at the needs.
There is math in ninth grade.
Well, there is math. Yes, no math at ADSES in ninth grade. The reason that was decided is when we were looking at the needs of the high school, reading really came as a much higher need than math. When we were looking at positions.
The IM4 system is implemented K through 12. Do you know how many of our scholars, you gave a 100, do you know? I mean, how many scholars are in, are receiving interventions? I'm sorry.
In IM4?
49. Well, so.
So the total number of students that accessed?
Yeah.
An intervention? Because there could be one student who received three or four interventions.
Right, so there could be one student, like, the IM4 is this 49. Could that student, would that student also be in ADSES or would that student?
They could be, they absolutely could be.
Okay. And then with the reading and math ADSES, potentially every student who's in math could also be part of reading. So some of them are duplicate students.
Some of them are duplicate.
It doesn't matter if it's a student population, it just represents the number of.
Number of students.
Thank you. So moving on to page 19. On this slide, we can see a chart that shows the rate of students making that aggressive growth or exit from intervention in the most recent year, the 2223 school year. Or 2122, excuse me. And this is summarizing the data we saw on the vision card for that school year. And with that, I'll hand it out to Robin.
Yeah, Dr. Robin. One thing I wanted to point out about ADSES interventions too is the purpose of ADSES, one of the purposes of ADSES is to keep students from being identified for special education services. So oftentimes, these are the students that are very close to going through the process of identification. So this is an intervention to ensure that they can remain in core instruction and not go through that process of special education services and really get their needs met in a different way. So as we're thinking about kids that made a year and a half progress, that's huge for kids that have been struggling over multiple years.
Yeah, I just want to highlight a couple of things that will come for questions and feedback. The thank you team, first effort at this, so we appreciate getting us to this point. Some key things that I think is important for us to keep in mind. So a number of these data are from last spring. That, if I get any of this wrong, team. But before we introduce our new initiatives and all the things we're about tonight, so all our improvement efforts that are in our strategic initiatives and directions, I started this year with baseline data, since this is from last spring. And despite the, you know, we're all on the same page with the proficiency rates being so, so low. But if you look at the fact that how we, I'm encouraged by the progress data as we compare those other districts, and the rate of efforts to kind of close those gaps. It's not where we want to be, but we're performing better than a number of comparison districts, so that's encouraging. And then it's establishing that baseline year and also giving us a way to have a year-over-year comparison. Apples to apples, like, look at our improvement efforts making a difference in the data. Along with our intervention efforts. Because that last slide's really telling the percentage of scholars who made better-than-typical growth. That's the whole idea, is we need to be performing better than the typical growth peers if we're closing gaps. So that's, those are the things that we need to try to keep on, not here. And then I know we're doing this, and I know it's been asked, represented to bring this up a lot. We're in the process of identifying that certain sites where we're really showing great results. And how do we turn that and replicate that where we can? What's in that recipe that we're getting those good results? And how do we turn that into the same kind of experience at other sites? So that's an ongoing thing, but we'll start to unpack and see where those things are happening. All right, Brian, if I, you were going to probably add some additional things, but I want to point those things out.
I think, I think Robin has the next steps.
Just the next steps, yeah, absolutely. And just as we're thinking about the next steps for the vision card E, we'll continue on to be selecting and sorting data that closely aligns with the strategic directions and the high priority initiatives. And when we talk about humanizing, we're really talking about, we want to continue to include approaches that ensure that data measures the daily lived experiences of our students, families, and staff. We're looking at opportunities to look at student voice, which is really something we're very passionate about as we move forward with the vision cards. And that we know that by humanizing the data and including student voice, we're applying that Street Data framework that we've been talking to you about many times in many of our work sessions. And then also, just one of the lessons we learned in closing is that piece about really having the work that we're doing, the learning work, the implementation work, that it doesn't just fit into one category. And we specifically found that with MTSS, that we really need, as Jenna was talking about interventions, that's part, making sure that our core instruction is really strong, that's another part of the work of MTSS. So making sure that we're looking at that. So we may be moving some pieces around a little bit in our three-year operation plan to include those, those aspects.
Now, I just had my appreciation for the team thinking, Johnny said it well. If we set the targets for progress and vision, that is a challenge. I think in previous scorecards, we would have said that 100. And it really wasn't always maybe realistic. So what's reasonable and attainable and still really challenging us as a system? And then you reset, right? Now you set a new target in kind of going through that process. Instead of something that's not really realistic. And I think that's what I've seen in past districts do. And I'm appreciative of setting attainable, reachable targets that will only motivate, even motivate us to be better along that way, so. Yes, direction, direction, great work. So with that, we're members, can we jump in and ask questions, give feedback? Again, we're excited about the feedback because this is our first run at this, first.
Well, that was really my big concern is what you were just talking about, is particularly when we're looking at the achievement of state standards, the topic that comes up a lot, and it's also a pain point in our research. Pain point, which also typically will have disparities within our district in areas we've been working on improving for a long time and not been having the desired success. So that was my main concern is that where, I appreciate the amount, the understanding of why these percentages were chosen where they were. But then when we think about like that category five of our vision, I'm like, well, that's not really what our vision is. And our vision is 100, right? We want 100%. So I appreciate that, you know, you acknowledged that shift as we improved to stretch to reach those. Because I was a little bit concerned as we were going through that that wasn't going to be the end target. So I appreciate that, thank you.
I mean, that was similarly something that kind of stuck out and kind of bothered me throughout the presentation. With that said, I'm very excited to see our first scorecard. And thank you for all the work that went into it. I guess I'm just struggling with the different standards between the reading and math proficiency. And when I look at that 30%, to me, that shouldn't be yellow. But I also understand how those percentages were calculated and, you know, why they're listed the way they are. Robin, can you remind me what the three means? There was a term.
Baseline.
Baseline.
Okay.
Baseline is the three, their starting point for this year.
Okay. All right, and then I think one of the other questions I had, I think I just, as we went through this, I just had a lot of additional questions that I know can be answered at some point. But just the breakdown between maintained and improved in the progress categories was something that I wanted to see more of. And then, same thing with the last slide with the percentage of scholars who made better-than-typical growth or exited. So what are those percentages of those that actually exited versus just, that were better than typical growth? So yeah, just, I guess, more of a breakdown is what I was looking for. But other than that, you know, as a scorecard, I'm definitely happy to see that we have some sort of baseline work off of going forward.
Director Brooks, your last point there, this, we're hungry for feedback. Like, we're excited to get perspective and thought, additional partnership on it. So if we were to hit the mark on the last thing you were looking for, what would that look like?
Well, I think you kind of, you actually kind of talked about it when you mentioned the, you have 100 students and 47 exited.
Okay.
So the numbers that I'm seeing here are encompassing both those that exited and those that scored better than typical growth. And so I guess I was just looking for like how many actually exited from intervention.
Okay.
So just more of a breakdown of that.
Okay, got it, okay.
I think that's really helpful for us to answer. Who are those kids on the path to exiting? Like, they may not be there yet, but they, their trajectory is going to get there if you just keep going this way. Sort of that positive battery.
Well, this is really exciting to see. And I really appreciate the persistence to get here over the last few years, to, you know, go through everything that we've gone through and still get to this point and get it on paper and get our baseline. I think, you know, we've got so much data, so be able to really drill it down to, these are the indicators that we think are most aligned with driving the outcomes is really helpful. And I know we're going to learn a lot with this too, and that may change. So I'm so supportive of just the, you know, we're learning. And as we go through this year, it needs to change, and it needs to change. And that's okay. So the one kind of challenging part when we look at annual metrics, right? Okay, well, how are we going to know through the year so that we're not surprised when we have the, a year, like, the next annual measure? So that's the thing that my head is just kind of going to is. So that's the thing that my head is just kind of going to, is how are we going to know if we're on track during the course of the year?
Like a live dashboard?
Yeah, and I'm not, that's not what I'm asking for. I don't want to freak everyone out, the next measures, but just, um, how, what are we going to use to know if we're on track, so that we don't come back and...
A good example of it is that our FastBridge, progress margin report, that we do three times a year.
Yes.
Right? So that, that's our benchmarking along the way.
Yeah, yeah, and incorporating that into the connection to this strategic direction.
I think it's good that this can sit, that we've put a lot behind this, because this could become a fifteen-page.
Yes.
If I lost you, this was a twenty-page scorecard, you'd lose the force for the three go tests. So there's, you know, the learning is what, what's behind all this, and maybe the director Brooks' question, you know, what's additional breakdown, when we need it or when you want it? I like what you said, probably the, these are the higher-level indicators for, for now, but I think, we want to make sure we didn't come out here with a hundred metrics, instead of, to what the, the one we want to center on for now, then as we learn, maybe there's adjustments that could be made.
Yeah, yeah. And I also really like the work to have the report that's in detail, that really puts the onus on us as board members to read and prepare, um, that has, drives the right focused discussion for the work session, and highlights the key points, so I really think this is a great process for how we conduct our board work as well.
So what I'd be looking for from the board as we go through the process of this year, let's see how you feel at the end of the year, you know, when you are, are annual work, does this still work for you? Does this still give you the information ahead of time? And, or is there adjustments we want to make to how we present information to you, how we organize it, so we don't always just have to read it all to...
That's what I was just going to say.
This time we did a little more, it's new, that we can all be a little more comfortable with it, I think we'll, there'll be less of that.
Yeah, I was, I was going to comment that, I felt like once I was oriented to what everything meant, I didn't really need slideshow part of it, I really just needed to know what this meant in relation to this.
Hopefully, that's something that gives us some context of how, how we kind of arrived here, um, that we have developed it, so. And of course, for our team, I can explain, you know, how we kind of landed on these things, right?
Um, I have a couple questions. So, I'm just curious, when I look at the, the CMC standards, you know, there's such a push to potentially, um, face MCAs and other, you know, content or demands, or, you know, so how, how will that kind of impact, and along those lines, um, you know, there's an opt-out of MCAs, so like, have you seen, how has that shift impacted the data?
We have had more opt-outs in the past years, obviously, partially because of the pandemic, also because I think that, um, there's been a lot of sharing of that information on social media, and maybe it hasn't been in before, you know, that people are opting out more. So I'm not exactly sure, as we start looking and really digging deep into the comparison, like, what we do in world-specific workforce next, next month, next month, we can kind of talk a little bit about what, what we see for that piece of it, I'm not exactly sure. I don't know, Tom, if you have any more information on that?
Could you do the data with MCs versus, um, the percentage of our student population that participated, to give us a better idea of how that, what that means to us?
Yep. We have, we still have a pretty high, even though we have more opt-outs, we really have a high percentage of our student population that participated, and, um, we are not cited for not having enough participation as, as some sites, some school districts are.
And we're just, you know, back into, this is much more of a regular year, you know, like, when we talk about twenty-one, twenty-two, that was much, much better than twenty-twenty-one from the standpoint of test administration and...
I think if we look in the future, more people will opt out of it, I mean, it doesn't, you know, there's a lot of arguments on why we wouldn't do it, and so I think we need to be thinking about that, too.
We can absolutely do that.
I like that, too, and, you know, for now, I guess it's still our reality, it's still our responsibilities, but that's why we like holding in the growth part, and, you know, giving a deeper look into what's our progress, I think, because of all the...
And there is a process to opt out, you can't just not show up, because we have to keep trying to find you to test you unless you go out through and fill the form out and turn it into the district assessment.
So we do have a very careful count of who, of how many did opt out.
Well, there's a row, right?
My last question, uh, you know, I, I found it really helpful, kind of just explaining how, you know, how you got to the baseline, but then, will you, will it be kind of delineated by ethnicity, or, I mean, are we going to be able to eventually see, because, I mean, it's good to have the meeting, and I understand the rationale behind it, but we know where the disparity is, um, historically, and we still have to research, because we, kind of what you were saying, I mean, there's a site recorded accounts, I feel like, you know, I understand, like, you know, there's probably some sites that we want to really focus on, but then also, um, you know, that...
So, um, a picture of the, the, the same data, high-level data, by race, grade level, okay?
I guess what I would rather see than that, um, is the data aggregated on, like, FastBridge composites, like, is there a way to get the FastBridge and get a more overall number from FastBridge rather than just, because that, to me, that's, you know, yeah, the more, speaking, the more real-time speaking, and whether or not our teaching is contributing to...
So the growth versus...
Yeah.
Maybe those are just some of the supporting factors we can add into the, the package, the set of data, right? So we have the high, the high levels, but then we got those supporting pieces in the middle to drill it down. I'm really interested, like, you and the FastBridge stuff, that tells me, are we, are we making those?
Right now.
Yeah, these are lagging indicators, and MCAs are very much lagging, right?
Plus, it's a one-time shot.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, you guys say that, then I don't even...
The state helps us.
I understand that, but I say, when we look in our district.
That's why we should use the FastBridge.
In our access, our, our access does a good, a good window into how's our intervention working for us, right? That's another, you know, key thought.
But this is like, I think, the issue, like, we have all this data, so which data are we prioritizing, you know, because I think that, you know, it's not MCAs, it's like, why use FastBridge? The state lets us do this, and then it's hard for us to pinpoint...
I think we could maybe fold in FastBridge, I don't know, like, of MCAs, it's part of our...
I'm not suggesting, though, to, like, let go of it, I'm just saying, like, that's, I think, for our public, and then for us, it's hard to, you know, all we hear about is the achievement gap, and it's like, but part of the issue is that there's so much, there's all this data, and it's like, what are we going to really prioritize?
In addition to what else I'm thinking about, is, I'd be curious to know, what, what measures are we using for our students who are opting out of those testing, or are a part of them, because MCAs don't test everything at every grade level, so how are we monitoring those things for those other kids?
We're all identifying the growth counts of each set of data to see three, and I like adding in the supportive dimensions of those additional breakdowns a lot, because I think we all want that full picture. And really, it's feedback for our system, are we doing, thinking, are we doing, are we on a path to improvement that's understandable, easy, right? I'll come back to that, the scorecard in the last issue got so big, it really got hard to manage and it didn't really be meaningful, so, balanced there, but I think, we can have maybe tighter windows into, the biggest disparities we see, and we know what they are, and how, which are our resources, I don't know. Also, you have to...
No, I just want to stand this right here.
Me, too.
This report, very clear, yes. I love the graphs embedded in, I love it, it's really good, and way easier to prepare. Yes.
Um, I just want to say thank you, everybody who put this report together, it's really cool to see how remembered ECAP process, and see how, see this actually come into fruition with the metrics. One of the metrics I wanted to ask about is the employees of color, and it does look like we've made some progress in administrators of color, but we're really poking along here, and I understand that there's a lot of root causes to that, but in terms of, like, matching the teachers of color to our students of color, we have a long way, which kind of follows up on some of the other questions, is that, at every year, will we be readjusting? So, you set parameters that are realistic, that we can move forward on, but, you know, some of them are very low, like our teachers of color, and will we be readjusting that expectation as we move along, as we make more progress? Because it's really hard to think about how we really fully address the achievement gap when our number, our percentage of teachers of colors, teachers of color is this low.
Laurel, you and I... You go first. You want to go first, that's fine. We're one of the leaders in this area, and that's the sad part, right? We have better data than almost every other district we compare to. We need to move in and ask, present, how are you getting those members, and they're visible, right? And I don't know if the new number is, you know, teachers across the state, is it four percent roughly?
Six percent.
The teachers of color are about six percent. Yeah, so, um, we agree completely with you, and yet, it's, Laurel, you can see better than how we've trained and what we do on this.
One of the things that we have been frustrated by in the past is that we recruit, 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 get a teacher of color, they leave, we replace it with a teacher of color, so your percentages don't change. So, one of the things that we pulled for this presentation was our retention rate from last year to this year. So, our teachers of color retention rate from last year to this year was eighty-five point seven percent, which is good news. So, now, when we hire a new teacher of color, we have culture, we have support, we have the environment, hopefully, they're going to stay. We are also... And we're looking at retention for ESPs also, Laurel, is ESPs of color? Well, I have a non-licensed percent of color, so that includes custodial food service ESPs, that's at eighty-seven point three percent, and our administrators is a hundred percent, those that were hired last year that stayed. So, those are all really good things. And we're, um, we're looking at trying to see if we can get approved to partner with PELFI on their portfolio process. So, they have a, a process where they take a cohort of teachers that are on their tier two licenses, and they go through the portfolio process, and if we are selected, we get to have a cohort of teachers come in, and the focus is on teachers of color and indigenous teachers. So, that could help us with that as well. Okay. Thank you. ESPs. Yeah. Yeah, I think the adding the retention rate is helpful for perspective on that, because that's the first thing we need to do.
And I think we're looking at some longitudinal retention rate for the board report, if we try to get that...
Right now, we have to pull it by hand, so to try to go back for seven years, Jenna's going to help us.
Pull it by hand, like, is that like a card cam log or something?
Yes.
Yes.
Does that help, camera?
Yeah.
All right, I got one last agenda item, just to be really brief on the calendar, to what, what to anticipate board members coming up. So, we will do a, a short version of this at the board meeting, so that's our rhythm, work session and working every other month on our strategic directions. We will be having negotiation strategies after our next board meeting, and our student board reps, you know, that, we, they were so excited to introduce themselves, they missed the, the updates. We're improving on how we support them, but they're so excited, and they'll, they'll continue to do a great job. Next month, in November, so we'll have our special meeting on the election canvassing prior to the work session. Our work session is on our world's best workforce, because that is the part reporting, your question earlier about what we'd spent at the state in December. We will also have an update by John on our LRP budget parameters for next year, and then our LTFM, of, of LTFM updates, I think, John, is this where we get to see some pictures?
This is the pictures.
You know, the actual finished products and things, right? At the regular meeting, we have our annual financial audit results, so you got a little tease of that last time, and then we will be sharing out our building a better future referendum results, and then our communication panel, where that is, and we'll likely have another negotiation strategy session, we're all, uh, clocked up, yeah.
Case you're out.
And then, I think we should plan it, because a number of those later is... And then in December, just to wrap up the calendar year, legislative platform, network session, along with the next strategic direction D, along with an enrollment update, so we've gotten our analysis in, in final, so, and then at the regular meeting, we have our retiree requisition, we'll do that December, monitoring report D. We'll likely be able, I can't guarantee this, but we are at least looking at our building a better future phase two, all it does, what happens is phase one, but we can start talking about phase two requisitions, and then we have our final, uh, taxation item that you heard more, you heard about last time. So, that, that's a lot of work to complete by the end of the calendar year, and that's what's in front of us. I'll send you an updated document, and we'll update on Friday, that's what we'll do. So, let me know if you have questions as you look at that, and we forecasted out the things we think are coming to us at the beginning of the new year.
And are the pom poms for when they have to clean out?
Our two lots, we're ready for that, yeah.
All right, so the work session is in January, it's Tuesday.